City Council is now called to order. Our private chief Scott Overton will give the implication. Councilman Jeff Everson will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
About living, please. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your mercy, grace, and love, and we thank you for your protective hand upon us. We pray now for this meeting. We pray for our city leaders, pray for our mayor, her staff. We pray for this council that has been elected to represent, Lord. We pray that you would give them godly wisdom from above to make decisions that are best for our citizens. We ask for your wisdom, Lord, and only your wisdom. Lord, go with us now. May everything that we do in this meeting glorify and honor you, and you be exalted. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bradford.
Present.
Mr. Everson.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Corbin.
Mr. Three.
Present.
Mr. Flurry.
Present.
Ms. Lynch.
Mr. Volker.
Here.
Tomorrow, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference of May, April 24, 2017, and city council meeting Tuesday, April 22, 2017.
You can be assured that you'll have that motion.
Good, good. Awards and recognition. Does any council member at this time like to be recognized?
I'll just recognize briefly. I know that there was a request for a representative from the DDA to attend today. However, the executive director and her assistant are in Baton Rouge during some historic preservation advocacy. And so Stacy from their office is here today to answer, you know, to take questions if we have some questions about that. I want to acknowledge that she's here and that they weren't able to be here today, but they are going to be happy to respond to any questions we make.
Thank you, Councilman Everson. Any other council member?
Mayor.
Nothing today. Thank you.
That brings us to reports. Mr. Green, would you please come forward? Does any member have any concerns you'd like to share with the other three?
Did you get my message about Peach Street?
Peach?
Like a lot on Peach Street.
No.
I emailed it earlier, so. Okay, I'll get with you after.
Terrence, I sent you a couple of things. Normally, I get an email back from you saying, "We're on it." I have not, and I'm wondering if you didn't receive any emails from me recently.
Is this about the apartments?
Several. There's apartments, and there's one about a ditch, and one about a next door that I did get through the system saying that you had signed off on it or somebody on public works.
We sent the ditch area to public works. We did fore that, and the apartments went to court for their arraignment last week.
And what was the result of that?
During the arraignment, they are there to plead guilty or not guilty.
So is it still, so how did they plead, or is it still going on, or what's the story?
Not guilty. It's still going on, and they were waiting for the owners from upstate to send the person that does their work down here to get started on redoing the roofs. And they've trimmed the grounds up, but it'll be a constant thing because we do have to go back and forth about the grounds. But as far as the building itself, they have the word. I was there when they had the conversation with the owners, that they are sending someone down.
Okay. And this may be a question for the city attorney. So in an apartment complex, from a property standard standpoint, do the roads slash driveways have to be a certain level at a certain standard? I.e., if you got huge potholes in these, and there's a lot of, there's a fair amount of parking behind that cornerstone part in it, I mean, that's a terrible condition. And is that something from a property standard standpoint, we can?
I'd like to do some research on it. As far as I understand it, those are private roadways.
Yeah.
And so ordinarily, our property standards would not reach in that deep, but let me look at it and see. So are you specifically concerned with apartment complexes or any private?
I'm particularly concerned about that.
Yes.
I mean, I've sent several emails about it. I mean, it's a significant problem. There are a lot of things going on there that shouldn't be going on. But they're not, from my perspective, reinvesting in the property or keeping it at a minimum standard. And I'm pretty sure some people are aware of all the other issues that are going on.
And we have that same, we have a lot of those issues, but we usually respond, but sometimes we'll go through the council's office, but we normally respond.
I'm not saying whether we're responding to this issue.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, a few minutes ago, you didn't get a response back. I'm just trying to see that you get a response, because we normally respond.
No, he's answered my question, because I asked him about, one of the emails I asked was what happened in the court system, and I didn't know.
Okay.
But what I'm saying, in the case of this particular issue with this apartment complex, they have a roof problem, they have some standards inside that we've been battling for a long time. There's some crime issues associated. And the overall, I'll say, discussion is, what does the city have when a third party outside the city owns their apartment building?
Right.
And they're not willing to reinvest or maintain it to a kind of a minimum level? They're not maybe screening the residents or some of the behavior that's going on in there? There's been several calls slash crimes that we have a history of. What do we as a city have in terms of recourse to encourage them? And one of the other things that I know the problem is the parking lot. But that's, there's no lighting in the parking lot. We've had several people that have been, you know, burglarized in their own cars. There's a lot of activity going on out there, and I'm just trying to look at all the different things that we can put into there.
Got you.
Well, I'll look at both, and Councilor Corbin makes a good point. Some of it is under zoning, too. I'll look to see what those potential violations fall under, whether it be property standards, public safety, or zoning, and try and articulate kind of a checklist for apartment complexes or multifamily facilities with private streets and roadways.
And same with, like, light.
Right.
I mean, you know, if we have 200-some odd people in this development, do we have any responsibility from the city to make sure they're safe? Okay.
Commissioner, Councilman Brack.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My statement may not be directly to you, but more directed to the administration in general in that the standard of districts are not the same. I think you know that. My district, especially the MLK area, is littered with dilapidated houses, care premise issues, eyesores. I have invited the chairman, the clerk, and the chairman of the property standards committee to go with me this week on a tour, because I wanted to see what can we do as a council. Somehow, the MLK area is going to have to be looked at in a different way, unless we can go in and just eradicate all of that dilapidation and, because I don't know how, I don't know how your inspectors are citing one property and not citing the others. I don't know how some structures are being asked for demolition, and the others are worse. So the clerk and the council chair is going to join me, and I'm inviting the administration, if they want to join us also, to just tour through that area and see. It's not, it's not, it's not nobody's here current problem, I mean, not problem, but blame. This is, this is, this is chronic, this is chronic dilapidation in areas where, you know, it has been neglected for whatever reason of being addressed by whoever. And I don't, I don't think it's fair for us to continue to ignore the difference in how we hold different parts of the city to a property standard and then allow other areas to be held at a higher standard than, because we just can't, we just cannot continue to allow the MLK area to be, to be at the rate of despondency that I see it. So I'm just saying that, Mayor, you or anybody from your administration could join us and let's look at this together.
Okay.
And that's all.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I do need to respond publicly.
Yes.
We'll be glad to do that. I used to live out there. I would ask also, Councilman Bradford, if you would work with us and help us.
Sure.
When we do try to sometimes enforce the same standards, and we do that across the city, we get a pushback. In other words, this was my mama's house for 30 years. It's an eyesore. We go to tear it down, the police get called, and we dealing with a situation right now that you called to our attention, and that house is in bad shape. So when we start trying to enforce those, we need help from the council members, particularly the council from that district. If we can demolish some of that stuff, it'll help us. But it's hard to even get ownership. That particular property that I'm speaking about now, I just got something on it today. We've given an extension to the young lady who came to you about that problem, and she still hasn't did what she was supposed to do. But that, you know, other people are complaining about the house. There is, we're caught between, it's a catch-22 for us. And we know that MLK was annexed into the city with all, a lot of those issues, and, you know, people don't keep up their property. And when we try to enforce, then we get pushed back, you know? They don't have any money, they can't do this, and they can't do that. So we're going to need, we're going to need the voices of all the elected people to help us with it, because then if we hold everybody to paying for what they're supposed to pay for to upkeep their property, then everybody needs to do that. So, you know, I just, I need to, I need to say that correctly.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just respond this way. I'm fully aware as the council that we are a city of cold ordinances. And that we have a responsibility to uphold those standards. Now, what you said, is that really correct? In that because of the high level of poverty in a community that is pretty much economically disadvantaged to the extent that they're not readily available to do the things that we would require of them?
Right.
Okay. The only thing I'm saying that, and that's why I think we need to do this tour, is that how can we fashion something that will allow opportunities to come about that may not be allowed? I agree that, and again, what I'm saying is that we, if we are, if we are going to hold people to a standard and that we have to abide by what's on the books as it relates to code enforcement, then it's not being, it's not being done to the level that it's going to really eliminate what we see in the blight of that community. So I'm saying, given, given the reality of what we're dealing with, I'm going to ask that we look at this situation and see if there could be any modifications done to that area, because again, that area's only been in the city a little over 35 years, and see how we can, because what you said is right, that the young lady that you spoke of, her property is, they lived in the property two, three months ago, but there's properties way worse than that property. That's what I'm saying. Way worse than that property. That it's just freestanding, and it's just horrible. So we'll view some of those, some of those sites on, Mr. Corbin, I'm thinking Thursday would be a good day to do it, if we could look at Thursday, and Mr. Chairman. So I'm just saying, we're going to bring back video and pictures so that you can get a better understanding of what we're, and if somebody from your office couldn't join us, then that would even be better. But I'm just saying that.
Okay.
I just don't feel, myself being the councilman in there, I just don't feel comfortable allowing that type of, that degree of blight to go without, at least looking at something that we may get to. Okay? Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Corbin, please.
I was just going to offer a friendly reminder that during budget talks last year, I think I did offer up a budget amendment to fully fund the demolition list that's currently out there for property standards, and that did not get support. And whether we talk about that again as we come up with our 2018 budget, and there's a number of reasons it didn't get support, you know, there was concerns about taking that money from other areas or out of reserve, and I think there was even some concern of staff of, did we have the capacity to clear the demolition list in a year? But it is a citywide problem. It affects all seven of our council districts, and I think it comes back to consistency in decisions as Terrence and his folks are in front of us with property standards cases, as well as making sure that we're funding the demolitions that we have, because if I remember right, there was around $700,000 estimated worth of demolitions that it would, that are on the books right now, and I'm sure that that number has grown from last year. But that's certainly a discussion that we need to have as we get into the 2018 budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Everson.
Yeah, I'll say, you know, sometimes I hear these discussions of, this doesn't happen as much in my area as it does in this area. And I got to say that as somebody who does represent a very diverse district, I mean, I see a lot of different areas, and I don't think it's as much the government's treating it differently as the property owners have higher standards for each other in some areas than in some other areas. You know, where if somebody sees a property going downhill at the first sight of it, they call it in on their neighbors right away, saying, "I don't want to let that get that bad," whereas in some places, it's a cumulative problem that's been going on for quite some time, and it's difficult to identify it. But I just, you know, because I see this, I just, because there are areas where, you know, there's $600,000 homes, and there's still a problem house or a problem property on that street. So it's not like, you know, somebody's not trying to pay attention to a certain neighborhood or a certain area. I mean, in fact, I would venture to say that probably the majority of property standards violations or citations have probably, you know, been in the areas where there are the most violations, you know? But it is a, it is a question of, are those achieving the results? I mean, is there something more that needs to be brought into the discussion that's maybe outside of government? Because I don't think it's something that just the government can do. I mean, I think it's something that we have to, community investors, property owners, you know, it's going to take more than just city street port, I think, to eliminate blight. But blight is a problem that can be addressed from a number of levels, and a lot of times we think, I think of it as sometimes supply side and demand side. And property standards is more addressing blight through the, you know, demand for addressing it, you know, like the demand for removing it.
Complaint driven.
Whereas providing higher quality low-income housing and higher quality of housing that's available for people who would otherwise rent substandard homes, in other words, make it less profitable for people to be slumwards and that kind of thing, that's another way that we address blight, is by taking the profitability out of it. And so, you know, it's sort of a larger conversation than just property standards, and I know you know that, but I just think for the benefit of the discussion, it's worth mentioning that in this forum.
And I appreciate that, and I think you're correct, and I think Councilman Corbin is also correct. I mean, you know, things is prioritized, and, but the problem I think we have here, 40 years ago, this was a rural community. The community, I think, history says that it was developed for what it's worth in 1929. So there's a lot of properties over there that was inhabitable, you know, mom, dad died, grandma died, kids moved off, but then they don't, they don't address it. And what has happened is that some parts of it, not all parts, but some parts of it where most of this blight is, the residents have become accustomed to it, you know? But at the same time, you know, some are, and then some say, "Well, whatever they do, me tag me," and that property over there is worse than this.
Oh, yeah.
But I'm saying that, that's my thing. I mean, there's no one size for all addressing this, right? But I think at least we need to confront it and see if there is something that we can do, and then at least raise the expectation that we're going to at least give people opportunity according to our policy and laws, but at the same time, make people realize that we are serious when we say we want a clean city, and we're going to address it and help wherever we can to make that happen. So that's what we want with this. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Green.
Sorry.
Mr. Crawford has already, I believe, presented this with the reg d collection.
I have, Mr. Chairman. Very good. Keep them coming. Keep them coming.
Any questions, Eric?
Do we know, I'm sorry, I may have emailed this question, I may have just thought it and never written it down, but it's going to happen. But do we know if some of the increases, and now I know it wouldn't all be attributable to this, but this was a positive increase in the sales tax from last month, and I noticed that some of that is from general sales. I was curious if we know if some of the online retailers like Amazon, who I know were in the process of maybe going, you know, applying to provide local sales tax. Do we know if it's attributable to that? Has that happened?
It wouldn't be sectioned off that way, Councilman, to say online-type sales, but I can try and find out for you.
Is that something that made the sales and use tax off? Because I know they were working on that.
That's who I'll check with.
And I just didn't know, I mean.
I'll check and see.
You know.
He just has it broken down into automobile sales, general merchandising, but it doesn't have a online, but I can certainly inquire and get back with you on it.
Thank you very much. Yeah, because that'd be interesting to know. I mean, if it is that, then.
That's good signs.
If he's steady.
It'd be an even better sign if this increase happened without that, because that would still be something to look forward to, so.
Betting on the house.
I can tell you one of the things that Jason Brown told us is that during that month when the 4,000 AKs, and their families came in.
Yes.
They did a lot of shopping.
2.5 million dollar economic impact.
She said it was 2.5 million dollar economic sheet she went and checked, so maybe we can get more people to do their, more women, to do that.
The ladies with some loose wallets in there.
Well, if you've got women, they'll shop. I just need to throw that out there. She did, she did tell us, though, that we had a 2.5 million economic impact from that, and we got that from the convention. Isn't that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Drum roll for Mr. Bradford. It's your demand. Sit down and process him nicely, all right, yes, sir. Okay. Mr. Clerk, it's so nice to see you today.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Did you bring us any good tidings? A couple of gears?
We have a public hearing scheduled for an annexation tag number 17-01, which aligns the limits and boundaries of the city for the Silver Point at Lakeside with number one development. Soon the administration will have a presentation tomorrow.
Yes. Tomorrow, Robin.
Okay. All right. We'll have that. Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir.
Any legislation to add tomorrow?
I believe we do have one item to add to the agenda. This is a piece of legislation, I believe it's a resolution to authorize the extension of a bid, of a responsive bid for the inclusion of an additional document that's required by FAA for taxi wait. I don't have the specific language, but I know that Attorney Bradford can speak to it.
It's on, it's Resolution Number 90.
Okay, I don't see it up here.
We just have to refresh.
Okay.
Let's shut down.
We have another one, Resolution Number 89, which suspends certain provisions of Chapter 10.
Oh, there it is.
For the sale, consumption of alcohol, and beverages, and the annual bears feast, fest, feast.
We have them, we refresh.
Okay.
I'll just, 89 and 90, if you hit refresh, they'll come up. 89 was online, but then when I refreshed, 90 got on there, too.
There you go. Thank you, Jim.
Yes, refresh.
And if I could, just while I'm chatting, I'll just mention Resolution 89, I would appreciate Charles' supportive attitude to the agenda. It's just a fundraiser for St. Jude's that they do at a little neighborhood bar in my district, and it's just one of those things where they contacted me pretty far out from the event, but it happens to fall on a day that's right after we meet, so if we can vote on it now, that'd be great.
All right.
We will put that under the considered agenda unless there's some question, objection.
Any objection? Okay. All right. There are no public comments at this time and no confirmation, so there are no items under considered agenda at this present. Mr. Crawford, let's continue.
Agenda legislation, items to be adopted, Resolution 83 authorizes plum orchard properties LLC located at 267 and 269 Fluenal Lucas, East Fluenal Lucas, right to connect the water and sewer systems in the city of Shreveport. And those are two properties that are contiguous to a 12-inch water main that runs down Fluenal Lucas between Helvey Road and Walston Lake Road.
Water line or water main? My friend's kind of upside down, so.
Connecting water and sewer system. They have, there's a 12-inch water main that runs out there. I'm sure there's a sewer.
That would count for me.
Yes.
I didn't think everything, all the supporting documents have sat down.
Wow. What are you doing?
Just hit refresh and see if that works.
It's on everything else.
Refresh it.
It didn't. It didn't work? Oh, I'm going to turn it off and turn it off.
No, that's on our thing. I can't do anything about that.
Okay. Any comments? Mr. Crawford, please proceed.
Yes, sir. This is regular agenda legislation. Resolutions on second reading and final passage are which will require only one reading. Resolution 82 authorizes the Mary and Skidder intergovernmental agreement between the Caddo closure port commission, the parish of Caddo, and the city of Shreveport. This is a sport tran pilot program for the port, where each of those entities is providing the funding for that. Resolution 88 congratulating and honoring Booker T. Washington High School band on their accomplishments at the World Stripes Festival in New York City.
Any reason 88's not in the considered agenda?
Well, I invited the principal and the band director.
Google player.
I mean, somebody, we were thinking about Bud Nell on that one or something.
No, I just wanted them, I want to address it separately so that they can come forward and receive it.
Remember now, BTW, wants a line, always a line.
That's it. Mr. Crawford? Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we're under introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to May 23, 2017. Resolution 84 authorizes the Mary and Skidder donated agreement between the city of Shreveport and North Fair Road LLC, here and after called owner and acting herein through William L. Mayfield, manager for the private water and sewer improvements for St. Charles Place subdivision, Unit 14. This is an extension of an existing subdivision in Shreveport where all utilities and roadways are dedicated to the city. Resolution 85 authorizes the Mary to enter into a cooperative endeavor and agreement between the city of Shreveport and participating high schools through their governing bodies relative to the Battle of the Borders 2018 high school football showcase and the use of city personnel, property, and equipment. Resolution 86 approving the budget for the Caddo-Shreveport are dedicated to the city. Resolution eighty-five authorizes the Mary to enter into a cooperative endeavor and agreement between the City of Shreveport and participating high schools through their governing bodies relative to the Battle of the Borders two thousand eighteen High School Football Showcase and the use and the use of city personnel property and equipment. Resolution eighty-six approving the budget for the Caddo-Shreveport Sales and Use Tax Commission for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand seventeen. Resolution eighty-seven is a resolution finding and determining that a public hearing has been held and that no petition has been filed objecting to the proposed issuance by the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, of its water and sewer revenue bonds in the amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty million dollars, authorizing the officials of said city to proceed with the preparations of the documents required for the issuance of such bonds.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Crawford, I don't see any, so please proceed.
Yes, sir. Introduction of ordinance is not to be adopted prior to May twenty-third, two thousand seventeen. Ordinance number fifteen amends the two thousand and seventeen capital improvements budget. This is thirty-three million, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred fifty-four dollars for three, or I think there's four consent degree sewer projects that are being paid for by a two thousand sixteen water and sewer revenue bond. Ordinance number fifty-one is a serious ordinance pursuant to the two thousand sixteen general revenue bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed one hundred million dollars of water and sewer revenue bonds, series two thousand seventeen A, and water and sewer revenue bonds, junior lien series two thousand seventeen B, of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, as provided in a notice of intent given by Resolution number thirty-eight of two thousand seventeen, adopted on March fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, establishing certain details of such bonds as required by the two thousand sixteen general revenue bond ordinance, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds to a group of underwriters led by Seibert.
Sisneros.
Sisneros? Okay. Okay. Shank and Company LLC pledging the net revenues of the city's combined water and sewer systems to secure such bonds, prescribing the forms and the certain terms and conditions of said bonds, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Ordinance fifty-two is a serious ordinance pursuant to the two thousand sixteen general revenue bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of not exceeding fifty million dollars of water and sewer revenue bonds, series two thousand seventeen C, of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, for the purposes of refunding the city's obligation under a loan agreement relating to the issuance, to the issue of Louisiana environmental facilities and community development authority revenue refunding bonds, Shreveport Utility Service Project Series two thousand five, establishing certain details of the two thousand seventeen C bonds as required by the two thousand sixteen general revenue bond ordinance, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds to Capital One Public Funding LLC, pledging the net revenues of the city's combined water and sewer systems to secure the two thousand seventeen C bonds, prescribing the form and certain terms and conditions of said bonds, and providing with other matters in connection therewith. Ordinance fifty-three is a serious ordinance pursuant to the general bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds to exceed twenty million dollars in principal amount of taxable water and sewer revenue bonds, junior lien bonds two thousand seventeen D, of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, as provided in a notice of intent given by Resolution thirty-eight of two thousand seventeen, adopted on March fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, establishing certain details of such bonds as required by the junior bond ordinance, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds to the Clean Water State revolving fund, pledging the net revenues of the city's combined water, net revenues of the water, city's combined water and sewer system to secure such bonds, prescribing the forms and certain terms and conditions of said bonds, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. And then finally, ordinance fifty-four amends the two thousand seventeen budget for the general fund. This will take fifty thousand dollars from the MPC fund, and as a companion, ordinance forty-seven for that places it back into the general fund.
Since it's by you, Mr. Chair, can you explain this last one to me?
Yes, thank you for giving that.
I'm just curious. I'm sure there's more.
Well, no, the fifty thousand dollars that the, for the position that they're not gonna fill, I wanna put it back into the city's general fund, and I base that on the last MPC meeting, where Mr. Sweeney said that he was in the process of visiting and talking with a financial consultant to determine what his salary should be, and what should the city give, and what should the parish commission give. I just assumed to have us have that fifty thousand back in our general fund. Now, he told us on one occasion that he was gonna use money to fund, that fifty thousand was gonna help fund the UDC, and so I'm asking you to support me to bring the money back to our general fund.
Okay, so, and I'm sure there's very good reason, and so I must have missed a few of these meetings where we were discussing it. So who's, what position is he not funding?
Mr. is it, Mr. Jambore?
Jambore.
Okay, so when Mr. Jambore rolled off or retired or whatever he did.
He left.
He left.
Sunday, left his keys on the bed.
There's a little more to that story, because I know a little bit about, than prior to your thing, right? Nice to say. So he left, and then Mr. Sweeney was not allocated, he was not gonna hire somebody new in that position, he was gonna leave a vacant. And was he trying to reallocate that from a funding lot, from a personnel line, to a contractual services, or what? Or did he just, he didn't necessarily say? His ordinance is on the agenda to be adopted tomorrow, the MPC.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. Okay. So this is where he's, that was submitted to contractual services. I didn't know this was linked to another deal. Yeah, it's linked to that one. So, so I, I think the chairman. Apparently I missed, it's all like communication. This is doing this, and this is going to this. And I'm not saying it's not a good idea, I just missed it. What is it, Jackie?
Contractual services.
Okay, now we, we.
Improvement.
Mr. Clerk, we did say, or we had a question about ordinance forty-seven, which is the companion. The ordinance forty-seven, which is the companion to this one.
No, no. Well, there's an amendment to ordinance forty-seven, so I think the chairman is gonna ask that you would postpone forty-seven tomorrow, and then bring it up at the same time as a new ordinance. The amendment would be to take the funds from forty-seven and send them to the general fund, and then the general fund ordinance would be to place it, to accept it and place it in the operating reserves. Okay.
I think what I was trying to to say, that was ordinance forty-seven is currently listed under ordinances on second reading and final passage.
He's gonna ask it to be postponed.
Okay.
Okay.
It's not ours. It's not ours.
This is ordinance.
Right.
Yes.
I just wanna be clear. The administration has nothing to do with these two.
Well, if it's adopted, if it's adopted, you'll be asked to sign it.
I'm sorry.
If it's adopted, you'll be asked to sign it.
Well, then, that's when we come into play.
Okay, I get, okay, so he was moving into contractual services, and you're, you're just saying, instead of moving into contractual services.
Exactly.
And if he come to us with that reason, then you gotta tell him before everything. And did he, when he came to the council, did he say that that fifty thousand was, do more work with the contractor on the UDC?
That's not what I was gonna, I thought it was to implement the UDC.
Wait, now, you're talking about this with forty-seven?
Yeah.
It looks like, I mean, just in what I read, I mean, because, again, I'm kind of surprised we didn't talk about, I mean, you know, we had a master plan committee meeting last week, and this, this didn't come up.
Well, you're talking about the original forty-seven.
Yeah, no, I mean, we talked about, yeah, I'm talking about.
Forty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah. I came up with this fifty thousand going to general fund. When I read, when I read the minutes of the MPC meeting.
But what I'm saying is this part that they're asking to have moved from, you know, from increased improvements in equipment by four thousand and increased contractual services by forty-six. I mean, they're not here today to talk about that. I think, no matter whether you were offering your amendment or not, I think it's a good idea to postpone this, you know. I just think, one way or the other, we need a little more explanation on this from, from them, and it gives you an opportunity to tell us more of what you're thinking. But I think a postponement sounds like a reasonable action on either way.
Okay, good problem. Appreciate you, my guys.
Any other questions?
I'll just briefly, while we're, have we already gone through ordinance forty-eight and ninety? Are we still reviewing?
I have stopped there, figuring certainly I would ask a question.
I will say, if it's appropriate, now, I did send everybody a, all the council members and the clerk, some of the questions that had been asked that we discussed in the master plan committee meeting. They had some answers to those questions that had been submitted. We did have some additional discussion during that meeting about some other simple items. I know Councilman Fleury followed up with a question about flagpoles. That was one of the questions that came up in that discussion that we had during that meeting. And then, certainly, it's a helpful reference point to know what the current fees are, so I sent everybody that. And then, I hope everybody still has access to that original document that we had that shows kind of some of the neighboring communities, what they charge for similar services. And happy to try to answer whatever other questions we can. Now, obviously, I'm not the one asking for this, I'm just trying to help facilitate the questions in their absence. So I can't speak to their desire or need for anything, but I can certainly try to answer what the questions are.
Mine's a technical, or, I've noticed when I opened up the fees for the city and the fees for the parish, did I see that right, where the parish is lower than the city?
That's correct, yeah. The parish has not updated their fees since two thousand eight. The city did update our fees back in twenty fifteen, and then again, maybe in twenty twelve. I mean, we, the city has updated our fees a few times in recent years, and the parish has not. And the parish keeps their fees.
Oh, that is right.
Let's make sure that that's clear.
My next question is, when do we stop that booze? How do we get to the next level? I am so glad you brought that up. When did we get to the next level and stop that madness?
Well, there was a bit of discussion.
I should have ring all the adding on the mine, or we ought to wait to the budget.
Well, I don't think that, I think that's a parish conversation that they have to have.
Well, the clerk told me we have an intergovernmental, or council, straightened out, we have an agreement with the city, with the MPC, that they get to keep our fees. That, we have an agreement, so it's, it's signed. It's in, and I'm wanting to ask, when do we get, stop that?
You wanna say, when do we take our?
Yeah, but I mean, when we gonna change that? We can't let them keep our fees.
I thought you were referencing.
No, no, they are keeping our fees.
Yes, sir, but when do we stop that madness? Do we wait to the budget process and change it at that time, to tell them we're gonna get out of that agreement? I mean, I'm wanting to move to the next level.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I don't remember an agreement where we agreed to allow that. I think that, does anybody remember?
Well, I'd have to go to the Attorney Bradford. Is there not an intergovernmental agreement with the?
I'll look and find it out, Mr. Chairman. I think it may just, I don't know. Let me look and find out.
Well, surely we didn't give them a deposit slip.
Well.
I, I, so my question is, when can we make some kind of change on that? Do we wait till the budget process this year and notify them that we're not gonna let them keep our money?
Okay, well then, but, I mean, obviously, then what do we do about their budget? I mean.
Maybe that discussion didn't have to scale more than that.
I mean.
We're gonna charge the parish a little more.
I mean, I understand the idea of charging them, but the idea of not paying them.
Gonna send them a bill, that due on, due on demand.
No, but are you advocating that we get the parish to give their fees, or you advocating that we as a city not give them our fees?
I'm saying we give them a budget. It's a million something, and I don't think that our fees are included in. That's plus our fees that they get to keep.
No, their budget includes a line of fees.
Estimated revenue.
Estimated fees on their revenue. So there's contribution from us, and then there's estimated revenues on fees.
We gonna deduct our, that off of, out of the budget, and then go to the parish and take up.
Because then that, then if we keep our portion, then we're only paying whatever forfeits of that number back, which is a good deal.
You like a good deal.
I always like a good deal. I like a good deal. I just wanna make sure I understand how the numbers are gonna work.
We all clear?
That's good.
Okay, that's all I have on that. Good. Next.
Ordinance forty. Mr. Chair, are you ready?
Yes, I believe I am.
I'm just checking, sir. Ordinances on second reading and final passage numbers are assigned to ordinance number, ordinance number forty levies a tax of eighteen sixteen one hundreds mils per dollar on all properties subjected to ad valorem taxation within the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, from the year two thousand seventeen, for the purposes of paying principal and interest on the outstanding general obligation bonds. Council members, this reduces the millage in this area from nineteen point one zero to eighteen point one six, or a reduction of zero point eight four mils. Ordinance number forty-one levies a tax of eight and fifty-five one hundreds mils per dollar on all properties subject to ad valorem taxation within the bounds of the downtown development district of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, defined by LARS thirty-three twenty-seven forty point thirty-eight for the year two thousand seventeen, and the accounts and purposes described herein. This is proposed by the DDA. This is an increase of eight point five five mils to eight point six four. They did have an overall increase of zero point zero nine. They did have an increase in Caddo Parish, but a decrease in Bojor Parish property taxes. They'll see about an eight thousand dollar increase next year. Ordinance forty-two levies various taxes totaling seventeen and twenty-nine one hundreds mils per dollar on all properties subject to ad valorem taxation within the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, for the year two thousand seventeen, in the amounts and for the purposes prescribed herein. This is the current tax millages for all ad valorem taxes. Ordinance forty-three provides for the issuance of the millage rates whereby the city shall roll forward the millage rates not exceeding the maximum authorized rate, and levying various taxes totaling seventeen and sixty-five one hundred mils per dollar on all properties subjected to ad valorem taxation within the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, for the year two thousand seventeen, in the amounts and purposes prescribed herein and otherwise provide with respect thereto. This will be an increase from seventeen point two nine to seventeen point six five, or a total increase of zero point three six. Couple that with the decrease in GOB of zero point eight four. Overall, people's taxes are gonna go down this year, zero point four eight mils.
If you will, explain one more time why we having to, we not rolling forward based on?
Yes, ma'am. The, if we remember correctly, in May of two thousand sixteen, the tax valuation from the assessor's office for property in Shreveport was about one point five five billion dollars. That was an increase over the previous year, which led the administration of this council to roll back taxes so we would collect the same amount. So we went from seventeen point six five to seventeen point two nine mils. Unfortunately, when the tax assessor came out with the actual amounts, the evaluation was one million, one billion five hundred and fifteen million dollars, which was actually a decrease in property values, and the city lost an estimated six hundred thousand dollars in collections that they would have normally gotten during that. The law, the law allows us to roll forward the millages to those that were voted on by the voters to seventeen point six five, to recover some of those costs at least for two thousand seventeen, and you should take in about five hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars over what we took in last year, and trying to recover some of that. Again, I wanna preface that the overall, the good news is, people's property taxes are going down this year. There is an increase in a roll forward in the ad valorem taxes based on the error that was made last year and just putting it backwards supposed to be, and then with a decrease in the GOB mils from nineteen point one zero to eighteen point one six, that's the city paying off debt. That's a good thing. That's a zero point eight four reduction in mils. So overall, when you put the two together, people are paying zero point three six less in property millages in two thousand seventeen going forward than they paid last year. So they'll pay less taxes this year than they paid last year, depending on the valuation of their property.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Crawford?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
In our last meeting, there was some discussion about asking someone from the assessor's office to come down and talk to us about how this happened. Have we made any progress there?
We've reached out to them and hope to have a representative here tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I think, I think Finance Director Madden also sent a email to the council that I believe was shared.
Get that.
I think it was related to valuation of oil and gas properties, and then coming back from the state and getting those values, which was the primary reason for the overvaluation or overestimation.
By the state. That was by the state, overestimation. That was by the state overestimation.
I believe that's, when the state did their assessments on the actual value, they, the locals picked it up and then they transferred it.
I could call Mr. Madden, come up, just in case you had other questions and if you ask tomorrow.
Well, I know, excuse me, Mayor, but I knew that Councilman Jenkins asked for that, but it seems to be several people asking about it, and I appreciate you clearing that up.
Absolutely.
That taxes have gone down. Yes.
The values that parish, that the assessor uses for oil and gas and for public service accounts comes from the state, and they simply just use whatever the state gives them. And then the personal property and the real estate, they estimate themselves.
Okay, so that, oh, ma'am. Okay, so you said, I'm going to say it was sixty tracts or property in its Excel spreadsheet, some number about that number. Okay, so those properties, those are producing oil and gas properties? What are, I mean, I don't understand what those, I read them, what are they?
I'd have to go back and look and see exactly what they are. Those were just, you asked them what the properties were, so I just pulled the report showing what the properties were. What made up that number?
Yeah, and so what I'm having trouble is, is, you know, how property is assessed based on oil and gas? Does it have something to do with production, the value of the oil and gas production, or there's some kind of processing facility that is associated with the oil and gas industry that is of lesser value because the industry is not in as good a financial shape? I don't, that part of the, it didn't really answer the question of what those entities are that were, that the state is valuing that is somehow reflective in property taxes. And that's what I'm.
I'll look that up and let you get that.
Trying to find out what we're really talking about there. Because it surprised me that we have that many tracts of land inside the city of Shreveport that are producing oil and gas properties. Could be, could be. That generate city property taxes. Okay, but, so I'm trying to understand the next level of fidelity. I want that really.
Okay, I'll look that up and see exactly what the state says they use as their criteria.
You're like, what those properties are and how they're valued.
And maybe the representative from the assessor's office, are we having somebody to come tomorrow, Mr. Trump?
We're going to invite someone, yes, ma'am.
We're going to have somebody coming tomorrow.
Trying to have somebody.
We've asked. You've asked.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I mean, that's a person that can answer that, great. I mean, I just.
Well, you know, they're going to come because we get it from our assessors.
Our tax assessor.
And they get it from the state, so maybe they can answer those questions.
No, it's like it's a burden of state, I think maybe they can.
No, no, yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, it's, the whole thing still puzzles me on why this oil and gas properties in the city of Shreveport.
I don't own any of them, so. Charles, you may not know this off the top of your head, and that's fine. We can talk about it tomorrow or maybe try to clarify. Based on that list of oil and gas properties, and I'm just jumping and making an assumption here of where some of those properties may be, but I know one of those operators has mineral leases that include a lot of our downtown airport property. So if, if an operator had a producing unit that was on downtown airport, which is not taxed anyway, would they, would property tax be calculated in because it's a producing area? Or, does that make sense? Does something come back on the tax books, even if it's, if it's public property that's been leased because it's in production? Or because it's public property?
I'd have to look that, I would say, yes, if someone is making income, just like, if the city owns land and we rent it out, it's taxable, even though it's city land. If we're making income off of that property, then it is taxable.
And that tax is then returned to the city of Shreveport?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I have a question. I'm a little confused now. Was the state asked evaluation based on the information that the state provided or the information that the assessor provided, or both?
I don't know when, I'm assuming the assessor had the information from the state when they sent out the report in May and stuff.
You said, you said the state provided information about oil and gas valuation, and the assessor does the evaluation on the other property.
Correct.
So I'm asking, was it the state's information on oil and gas that caused the error, all of the error? Or was it both?
The change in the valuation of the oil and gas was greater than the change in the personal and real properties.
So that was at least most of it?
Yes.
Okay. Didn't you mention to us that the timeline for the state to do their assessment of those values is different than the timeline of when the?
I don't know when, like, the letter that we get from the state legislative auditor that tells us what we need to set our property values at had a value on it. And then when we got the final report from the assessor, it was lower. What information the assessor had, whether they had all the information from the state at that time, I don't know. I would assume they would have if that's what they're basing property taxes on.
Somehow I got some deal that the state sent a letter to the parish saying this is what, or the parish looks at the previous year's oil and gas assessment that they generate from the state, lumped that in with ours, and then after they sent that to us, then the state subsequently changed their values and sent a new letter causing this whole problem. But I don't know where I got that from.
Okay, the person, I mean, the person I talked to, the assessor didn't say it that way. Go ahead.
I may have that one.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
The other thing, Mr. Chairman, is none of these will be adopted prior to May the 23rd.
All right. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
We're still in the middle of ordinances on second reading.
Right.
Yes, sir. Ordinance forty-five provides for an increase in the millage rates whereby the Shreveport Downtown Development Authority shall roll forward the millage rates not exceeding the maximum authorized rate and levying various taxes totaling eight and sixty-four one hundred mils per dollar on all properties subject to ad valorem taxation within the bounds of the downtown development district of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, defined by LARS thirty-three twenty-seven forty point thirty-eight for the year two thousand seventeen in the amounts and for the purposes described herein. This is a companion to ordinance forty-one where they are rolling theirs forward. Ordinance forty-six is an annexation. This is tag number seventeen dash zero one, enlarging the limits and boundaries of the city of Shreveport for the Silver Point at Lakeside Unit Number One Development in Section Twenty-Seven. This is T sixteen North R thirteen West Cattle Parish, Louisiana. Ordinance forty-seven amends the two thousand seventeen budget for the MBC Special Revenue Fund budget appropriating the funds authorized therein. Ordinance forty-eight to provide for the establishing fees for the Unified Development Code, and then forty-nine is zoning also, C dash twenty-nine dash seventeen, the main chapter one oh six of the code. Ordinance is the city of Shreveport zoning ordinance, is my rezoning property located on the southeast corner of Watts Road in Lynnwood, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from B three Community Business District to B three E Community Business Extension Use District, limited to automobile and truck body repair only.
Mr. Chairman, ordinance forty-seven, if you look out near the end, you'll see amendment number one. Just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not aware of any item that's to be taken from the table. We still have four items.
Okay.
We're now under property standards appeals.
There are two cases, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Ms. Green. How many do you have today?
Two. I have two. The first one.
Are any of them, Councilman Bowman, in our district?
No.
Okay.
My first one is forty-three eighteen Hollywood Avenue. On this case, you asked me to come back with something concrete on the property as to what the owner was going to do. She's going to come in tomorrow morning, sign an affidavit for us to demolish the structure. And that was as of this afternoon.
That's good. It needs to happen.
So we need to postpone it until next meeting?
Yes, and then after next meeting, you guys can basically close it out because we'll have it in-house.
You have a grievance on demolition.
I can make that much.
Sir? Can you postpone tomorrow after she, you know, she's signed?
Well, if you want to break.
I mean, same difference. I mean, as long as it's at the next meeting, I mean, I moved to postpone the ordinance meeting.
Second. Second. Councilman Bradford, second.
Hopefully we see pictures first.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, that's her. Okay, Ms. Green?
Okay. Okay. Case number two is four thirty-three, West Sixty-Sixth Street. This is a bill dispute. This property was written up October fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, and as you can see, we did the cleanup back November of two thousand fifteen. The cost on it as of right now with interest is nine hundred and forty-five dollars. The original, the actual bill was seven fifty, I believe. The owner did sign for the green card.
That's the postal.
Yes, notification. This is, you're starting to see before photos of the wood that was on the property. That's an after photo. This is a couple of trees, con trees that the owner, I have spoken with, he is here today, was for his personal use. There's another pile back at the, back of the property there.
Are you claiming that the bill is accurate?
Yes.
And I want to dispute it?
Yes.
Where is the owner?
He wants to sit back. He wants to sit here.
Count Dreadlock? Count Dreadlock?
Yes, he walked out.
A while ago, or?
There's a cloud with dreadlocks.
I didn't notice them back there. Well, I've moved up, hold the property standards decision on this. This is in my district. I mean, this is a lot I've gotten complaints about before in the past. Neighbors around there have complained about, you know, just debris sitting on it and that kind of thing. And I think it was an accurate charge, you know, based on having driven by it and the kind of calls I've gotten about this.
Well, let me say this. I did call him to discuss reducing the bill by two hundred and fifty dollars.
Say it again.
I did call the owner of the property.
Like basically knocking off the interest and just having him pay the original amount? Was he agreeable with that?
No, he said he didn't feel like he needed to pay anything.
Well, I'm a hold property standards if I got any support on that.
Second by Councilman Oliver Jenkins and motion by Councilman Evans. Any discussion?
I just have a question. Prior to executing the cleanup, was, was the owner aware?
Yes.
He showed you the green card.
He was, yeah. Now, I guess his argument, at least in as much as I understand it, is that he said that the way those trees were cut up there, he was going to use them and he was storing them there. Well, that's not really storing them when, I mean, it was clearly a property standards violation. So, I mean, that's, he's not saying they didn't come clean it up, or he's not saying he didn't know about it. He's just saying that it should have been okay because he was going to use the trees.
And the fact that.
But it's not okay because it was a property standards violation.
And you spoke to him, offered him a compromise, and he rejected? And he was going to come here and make his case on why it was overcharged? What evidence was he going, was he going to use to make his case, you know?
I don't know. And this is basically my statement from our conversation. So we documented it.
I have both. No, no, I have both.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. This is voting, we have the whole province standing. Madam Clerk, ready?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not aware of any other appeals. If there are none, we're bound to reports from offices, boards, and committees.
Okay.
I'll say we did have an infrastructure committee meeting earlier and got some helpful updates on some of the things we're working on there, primarily, I think, the progress on the Evergreen contract in that section the administration's been working on for a while. And what we're doing there in infrastructure is trying to see what will the council complete and make sure that we're supportive of moving towards that when the time is appropriate. And it looks like they made some good progress there, got us the necessary information that we need. So that, that conversation went very well. We also got updates on a number of other items that were on that agenda. And if anybody wants additional information, feel free to touch base.
I would say the Marv one thirty.
Could you tell she's on the public seat? Do you hear, public seat, Chair?
My promise, if you were taking off, there wouldn't be any going of mine.
No, I'm just asking, I mean, as a chairman, you probably know, all on the public safety committee.
Everybody's inspired.
It's my staff.
Feel free, whatever you want.
That's right.
Oh, I'm on it, yes, sir. Well, see, that's why I think it's important that we ask this question.
If we all were taking off, it wouldn't matter to me, it was my chair.
Okay, so I got.
But you can show up, though.
I know I can show up, but I don't want, you know.
I've been inviting you for a long time, and you won't come.
Should you show up tomorrow?
I'm going to check my schedule.
Last year, if you're ready for the clerk's report.
Mr. Chairman, based on a request from the city attorney to have an executive session to discuss T. Scott Bernice et al. versus city of Shreveport, the cap, the chair called a special meeting tomorrow at four o'clock or as soon as the regular meeting of the city council adjourned.
Take me, eh?
Yes, so.
Four o'clock, that's.
So we're at one, four o'clock.
I'm leaving. He's telling you to get a move, get it moving. Four o'clock? R.
No, so I like that. That timing's good.
All right, Mr. Thompson, anything else to rule out any?
I'm not aware of anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Vice President, Councilman Bradford.
Okay, for additional comments, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How are you to the mayor?
There's the additional comments.
Not at the moment.
Okay, well, is that may have first, that's why I'm waiting. Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple. Let me, let me thank you, as well as the chief of police, for attending the meeting at Cherokee Park Elementary School last week on crime, on crime and violence seminar forum. I thought it was, that went well. I want to thank the chief for his presence as well, that's, this comment is very lively discussion. discussion. There will be a follow-up meeting for the purpose of reorganizing the Cherokee Park, Holland Park Neighborhood Association. Some brothers requested that I would reside over, over that reorganizing, so we don't try to do that. And then lastly, may I request a meeting, brief, I want to speak with you briefly and Ms. Gray go after the meeting today.
Okay.
I did remember something. That jogged my memory on something that I think is, will be welcome news is, you know, under the committee reports, I forgot to mention, you know, in the master plan committee, we talked about a number of other things, but one of them was, not in this last meeting, but the meeting prior to that, was there had been some interest in, in starting back up that council of neighborhoods, which was something that, you know, was very popular for the short time it existed, but because of the way it was structured, they just didn't plan for the, you know, kind of constantly changing nature of a lot of neighborhood organization memberships. And so, so it sort of dissipated after, like, right after it got off the ground. Well, we do have a couple of people who are former presidents of neighborhood associations who volunteered to kind of step up and reorganize that group and they're going to be reaching out to everybody. The first step of this, if I could ask every council member, and I know Tanya passed everybody out a piece of paper a few months ago, but if I could ask every council member to take a look online on the council website, there's a list of neighborhood organizations. If you know that contact person is wrong, please let me know who the right person is. You know, if you know there's a neighborhood organization that's not listed there, please let us know who that is. And they're going to be reaching out to start gathering these folks together and, and I was really pleased with the volunteers who stepped up. I think they're going to be very good partners in this initiative. Looks like they'll get it rolling again. So I'll, I'll be happy to provide some more details once they get off the ground, but it looks like they may try to shoot for their first kind of organizational meeting in about a month or so. So at our next council meeting, I'll know some more details.
Any follow-up also, Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Steve Jackson was at the, at the meeting as well. And he mentioned, we was talking about patrolling, that parish, the parish has made funds available for overtime for Shreveport Police Office. Are you aware of that, Mayor?
No, I'm not. We haven't got any funds for overtime for.
No, he said they are available. Then he answered, Jim.
Let me give you an address that he can send those to. 550 Travis Street, Suite 200. If they want to provide us any funds for that, we'll be sure.
Because none has been provided thus far.
Maybe provided for his deputies.
I don't know. Is the chief over there?
And no offer. They would come through the mayor's office.
I understand, but I, I mean, he said it's, I heard him say, he said right there.
I'm sorry, but that's inaccurate.
I mean, you didn't really believe him.
No, well.
I mean, don't you think he would have seen it like somewhere in our budget or something?
No, 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 no. I, I think, I mean. I think, I think, I think what he was, what he was actually saying is that if, if requested that, because I asked him.
Well, that's different.
I mean, that's, that's different from what you just said. You said he provided.
I said, were you, were you aware that he's, he said that funds had been allocated for overtime pay, period. He didn't say.
Clarification on this conversation before we respond to it publicly.
Oh, no, we, we want to wear.
Okay, I, that's my question, were you aware? Now, now my next question is, but to him, because he was very, he was very adamant about that, that do we request it to get, to get those funds if we're doing?
We can't request what we don't know. We didn't know the parish would provide funds for overtime.
Okay.
Okay. So if you'll just.
550 Travis Street.
Mail a check to where?
711.
I thought, you see, how they could be.
505.
Somebody else will get that check and go pay it.
That's where the checks have been yelped.
505 Travis, Suite 200.
Sweet 505.
And I'm with, I'm with whoever asked. See, did you really go? I'll, I'll ask you that offline.
No, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I tell, I mean, who that said? He says, trust me, verify, is that, was that wrong reading?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm just saying that, I didn't ask him for that, Mayor. He volunteered that information and, and I will verify that that's the case.
Yes, sir.
He didn't have to mail it. We'll go upstairs and pick it up.
You go and get it, okay. I'll follow back.
Alexa, he offered.
I personally go get that check.
Anything else? Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Anything on this, Mayor?
No, sir. Nothing.